We will call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. We will call to order all of the agency meetings at one time. That includes the library, the rail authority, the airport authority, the redevelopment agency, the library, the missin', and the city council. The custom and habit with this council is that we begin every meeting first with an invocation, and tonight that will be given to us by Pastor Norman Schmuck from the Zion Lutheran Church. That will be followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by our chief of police, Captain Mark Taylor.
Let us pray. Almighty God, Father of all mercies, we your unworthy servants give you humble thanks for all your goodness and loving kindness to us and to all whom you have made. We bless you for our creation, preservation, and all the blessings of this life, but above all for your immeasurable love in the redemption of the world by our Lord Jesus Christ, for the means of grace and for the hope of glory. And we pray, give us such an awareness of your mercies that with truly thankful hearts we may show forth your praise not only with our lips but also in our lives by giving up ourselves to your service and by walking before you in holiness and righteousness all our days. We thank you for this country in which we live, for those who have served and are now serving in the armed forces, and for those who have given their lives that we may enjoy the blessings and freedoms we have. Help us and people of all nations to walk in the ways of peace and justice. We also thank you for this community in which we live and for the blessings of growth and prosperity we see around us. Even as we see this prosperity, help us to not forget about those in our midst who are in need of our support, encouragement, and assistance. We thank you for those who are willing to serve on this city council. Give them wisdom and understanding as they deal with the issues and concerns before them, and give them the strength they need to carry out their duties faithfully. Finally, Lord, in the words of St. Francis, "Make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is discord, union; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; where there is sadness, joy." Grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Welcome to each and every one of you, but we have a special welcome tonight. I understand that we have the senior American government class from Silverado High School accompanied by their teacher, Pat Dominguez. Why doesn't that class stand up so we can see you? Well, thank you for coming to the city. It's important that everybody be involved in their city and in the functioning of government. We hope that you'll find this enlightening. We really hope that it'll spark your interest in government and in civics and in the responsibilities that we all have to participate in the affairs of our community. So welcome again. You can come to City Hall anytime you want, and we're glad that you're here. Rothschild, Councilman Rothschild had just passed me a note, and then we have some Boy Scouts in the back. Perhaps are they here on a -- please stand up. Are you here on a project of any kind? Are you just here to observe? Working on your merit badges? Why don't you give us your name and your troop? Welcome. There are several of us on this diocese that had the good fortune to be Boy Scouts, and it's a great program, and I commend you for being involved in something that will steer you in the right path forever. It's a great program. Welcome. Every now and then we get to provide some special recognition to some very special people. Tonight we're going to make a proclamation, give a proclamation. Domestic violence awareness month. quality of life in our city for people who need help, need advocates, and need someplace to go. So I'm going to read this proclamation and present it to these ladies, and then I'm going to provide them an opportunity to share with you a little bit about what they're doing, the state of the program at this point, because it's been with us for quite a while, and it seems to get bigger and better all the time. So the proclamation reads, "Domestic Violence Awareness Month is dedicated to the empowerment of battered women and their children, and to the elimination of personal and society violence in their lives. Whereas domestic violence is the willful intimidation, assault, battery, sexual assault, or other abusive behavior perpetrated by an intimate partner against another. Violence in the home is a problem that encompasses all racial, religious, ethnic, and socio-economic groups, and whereas statistics show that one in four women will experience domestic violence in her lifetime. Each year as many as 324,000 women experience domestic violence during their pregnancy, and 50% to 70% of men who abuse women also abuse children. And whereas in the 2006-2007 fiscal year, Victor Valley Domestic Violence: A Better Way provided 6,648 shelter nights to 414 women and children victimized by domestic violence, and their 24-hour crisis hotline serviced 2,081 callers throughout the Victorville community. Whereas the goal of our community is to support programs highlighting domestic violence awareness issues and education on the problem of domestic violence. Now therefore I Terry Caldwell, Mayor of the City of Victorville, do hereby join the other members of the city council in recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urging our citizens to make a difference to one child, one woman, one family who suffers from the pain of domestic violence. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Victorville to be affixed here too this first day of October 2007. And although I've had the privilege of presenting proclamations similar to this to these ladies many times in the past, and these ladies have addressed you many times in the past, there's always something new in the message. So I will pass the microphone to you and let you share with the audience a little bit about where we are today.
Well, I want to first of all thank the council. You do recognize us, and you give us money, and we do appreciate that every year. And we have went from shelter to transitional housing. We have 24 units of transitional housing where our women can leave the shelter and they go into housing and stay up to 18 months rent-free. We provide all that for them, and they stay in our program. Plus, we wish that we would go out of business. We really do. We don't like seeing victims anymore. So I'll let Claire say a few words.
I just want to thank the council for their continued support of our program, and we're just here in the community to help all, and we are in the schools, doing intervention in the schools for healthy relationships with teens. So thank you, council members.
I just want to make one comment, something that Margaret said. I have a personal reason for hoping that your goal or your prayers realized and that you never have to continue to do this, because then maybe Claire'd come back and work for me. She left my law firm to go work with Margaret to work in this very important area. So if this was no longer a problem in our community, then maybe Claire'd come back to work at Caldwell-Kennedy and Porter. The sign in these new chambers makes it a long walk to get around to the front. Before we go into the other parts of the agenda, I want to draw everybody's attention to the banners on the wall. Some of you were here the other day when we had a very, very moving and emotional ceremony to recognize men and women from Victorville serving on active duty in Iraq. Those banners will be coming down, and they will be re-hung on the light poles, and this is an ongoing program as we identify other members of our community who are on active duty. More banners will be made, and they will be a part of another ceremony, and they too will become a part of the city's recognition, if you will, until each of them come home, at which time the banner will come down and will be presented to them. So I just wanted to draw it to your attention. It is a tremendous program, and if any of you have an interest in sponsoring a banner for any particular individual that you may know, I think the rough cost from beginning to end is about $225, and a lot of people, a lot of people in the community have stepped up to the plate, and I just let you know that if you have any interest in that, it is an opportunity that is available to anybody who is interested. With that, we will go to the various entities that we represent, the first being the library board, and I will defer to Mr. Hunter, who is our liaison to the library board.
Mayor Caldwell, would you like to do public comment first before roll of boards?
I didn't really want to, but I suppose I could. We will open the public comment on all of the entities, the library, the water district, the redevelopment agency, the rail authority, the airport authority, and the council. The public comment is the section on the agenda authorized by state statute where anyone in the audience who wishes to appear before the council and address us on any item that may be within our area of responsibility or jurisdiction can do so. Under public comment, of course, we have no idea what you may be bringing to our attention, so generally speaking, the council will not respond to public comment items. We will ask you to fill out a white card, which is available in the foyer, pass it to the city clerk. That will have the information necessary for us to communicate with you should whatever you bring to our attention require that we schedule an item for another council meeting or provide you with data or call you to get more information. I have no cards indicating any interest whatsoever to be heard under public comment. I understand now that there's somebody in the back. If you please, as always, Mr. Miller, bring your card up and share it with the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Norman Miller, and I'm sorry I didn't get my card in, but I got to talking a little too much earlier. Anyway, it seems like I always have an experience a day or two before a council meeting, an experience I had today is we left our house to get some gas, and as I left going down Sycamore Street, there was a lot of water running down Sycamore Street. So I went and got gas, came back, and there's still a lot of water running down Sycamore Street. So I went to see where it came from, and it came from, I don't know, probably about 300 yards south of Sycamore on Topaz, and there was a house that had a "for rent" sign in the front yard, and the sprinklers were just going like gangbusters. It was about 11:30 in the morning. That was a problem, but that's not the main problem. I called District Two or Baldy Mesa Water District. I got a message from Verizon that that number has been discontinued, and there was no forwarding number. So then I forgot what I'm going to have to do is call the city, because I didn't know District One's phone number or Victor Valley phone number. So I called the city, and she said, "Well, no, you can't get to the water department from here. You have to call their number." So I called their number, and I got the same message I got last week, day after the holiday on a Tuesday. Today's a Tuesday. I got the same message that "We are busy on Mondays. Please call back at another time." That was the gist of the message. So I waited, and finally somebody or another message came through and says, "If you want this department, dial one. If you want that department, dial two." But they also said, "If this is an emergency, do such and such." Well, after about a 15- to 20-second message about, "We can't answer your phone," they tell you, "If this is a message to do this for an emergency." Well, I think the emergency thing should come first, and that should come from an operator, a person, not an answering machine. So anyway, I pushed the button for customer service, number one, and I waited. It started making the beeps like you're waiting for the phone to be answered, and that did it for about five or six times, and then it went blank, like there was nobody there anymore. So I hung up, and I tried again. And I tried it again, got the same message, got the same instructions, did it again, but this time I waited a little longer, and probably after another 10 seconds of nothing, I got another answering machine telling me what to do. So I finally did that, and I told them, "There's a water problem." And they said, "Well, you have to call our water conservation person," which was fine. I understand that. I didn't know her cellphone number, but I did, they did give that to me, so I called it. I have to be on my cellphone because our phone line went out. It's been out for the last couple, three days. So I called on the cellphone, got ahold of the person, told them what the problem was. They were real appreciative, said they'd take care of it right away, check it out. I said, "Thank you." And then they said, "Well, don't call this cellphone from a landline." I said, "Why not?" She said, "It's because this phone comes out of San Diego, and if you call on a landline, you're going to be charged, toll charges." Well, that doesn't make sense to me for the City of Victorville to be using a phone system out of San Diego. That means, excuse me, if nobody knows, they're going to get charged. And when I called, they didn't tell me that you should use a cellphone, not a landline. They just said, "This is a cellphone number. Call here." Well, I don't know how much that costs, but I'm sure it's going to get up to quite a bit for people that don't have cellphones or wouldn't even use them if they did. I wouldn't have used a cellphone. I would have used my landline. Anyway, the problem seems to be along with that is that that's all we're getting anymore, our answering machines. We don't talk to people anymore. You have to go through an answering machine to get to somebody, and then when you tell them who you want, they transfer you to who you want, and that's another answering machine that says, "You're not here." My wife called one of the engineering people last week and called on a Thursday and didn't get a call back till Tuesday. So, you know, this isn't the way the system should work, I feel. I think you should have somebody at least to answer the phone. The only one that answers the phone is the 5,000 number. I think it's the girl in the main corridor there. I don't want to say her name, but whatever. That's the only one we seem to be able to get ahold of anymore. You know, I understand maybe you can't have somebody on every phone. We did a few weeks ago. Every time I'd call engineering or public works or planning, somebody'd answer the phone, and I'd ask for somebody, and they'd transfer me. They wouldn't say they're not around. I'd just get another answering machine that says, "I'm not here now. I'm either in a meeting, or I'm this, or that, and the other thing." And then it takes two or three days to get an answer back. That's not the way a business should be run.
Well, the manager of the water department is in the audience, as is the manager of our information technology department.
I think that they could look into this situation.
And I'm sure that they will take a look at it first thing tomorrow, and they'll come up with some type of an explanation as to what happened and what is being done.
Took me about 15 minutes to come from when I called Baldy Mesa to when I actually got ahold to talk to somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just bring up something. I got a couple calls concerning the same issue, and I did talk to Reggie. They are changing telephones over, and the water conservation department has been moved over to, I guess that's District, I never remember the numbers, I guess that's District One over there, into the BBWD building over there, and the phones were down. The reason they had to use a cellphone was a personal cellphone, which is all, that's all going to be changed, and it's all being corrected right now. And as a matter of fact, Reggie, you can correct me, I think the phone line is up now and working, and our 800 number that we have for water is being transferred to that department. So those things are being corrected, if that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Now that's, I have no other cards for public comment. Anybody else intending to speak under public comment for any of our agencies? Not that will conclude item one on each agency agenda. And going back to the library board, Mr. Hunter is our liaison to the library. Do you have anything further?
There is nothing on the library board, Mr. Mayor.
That concludes the library agenda. We will go to the rail authority. There are no other items on the rail authority. There are no revisions. Is there any emergency add-on items to the rail authority?
Do ahead. No, Mr. Leonard.
That concludes the rail authority agenda. We'll go to the airport authority agenda. Item three is the consent calendar. It's been determined that this is a routine, non-controversial matter, will be voted on to motion unless there's a request for a removal.
Second. Somebody needs to click the first. There you go. Thank you.
That concludes the airport authority agenda. We'll go to the redevelopment agenda. Item three is the consent calendar. Again, this item's been determined to be routine and non-controversial, will be adopted with just a motion unless there's a request for a removal.
Will you approve?
Item four is a request to authorize the execution of an agreement for acquisition and additional appropriation from the Series Seven Housing Set Aside Bonds in the amount of $165,000 for the purchase of real estate located at 15464 Eighth Street, Victorville.
Second.
Items five and six are closed session items. Are there any other items to be added for closed session?
Yes, Chairman Caldwell, we need to add a closed session item for pending threatened litigation. In order to do that, you need to make a motion pursuant to government code 54954B2, that the item arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's immediate need to take action on the item. We learned of certain facts and circumstances late Friday that are of concern to the redevelopment agency. It may require that the agency engage in litigation. There's an action pending within the next 24 hours, therefore I need some direction. It would be pending litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9B2.
I'll move the findings. Vote.
I need a motion and a second recorded. Need somebody to second?
Oh, second.
Thank you.
That concludes--
I need a vote from Councilmember Almond.
That concludes the water dis, excuse me, the redevelopment agenda. Go to the water district agenda, the water department agenda. Item three is requested, an I claim filed against the City of Victorville Water District, formerly known as Victor Valley Water District, filed by ELM Fire Protection, Inc., and VWD Number One, Southern California Edison. I move that the claims be denied. May be referred to staff for further handling.
First, or move your motion. Second your motion, sorry. He needs to do the first. Do your first.
Now we can do it. That would conclude the water district agenda. Now we will go to the city council agenda. There are no revisions to the agenda other than a request that item three, when we get to it, the appeal hearing will be opened and continued. Are there any other revisions to the city council agenda?
There is a request to continue item number 12 until the next meeting.
Item 12? Item three is an appeal hearing. The planning commission denied a request for a proposed conditional use permit, the applicant Ridgecrest Business Park owners. This item is to be continued. It's going to go back to the planning commission for consideration at their October 24th meeting, and it will be reconsidered by the city council at our meeting on November 20. Because it is an appeal hearing, even though these banners are going to be continued, I will open the hearing and invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on the issue of the appeal by Ridgecrest Business Park owners. Anyone who wishes to be heard. Hearing done, we will leave the public hearing open, and we will continue the city council's public hearing to November 20, 7:00 PM, the chambers, and the matter will be reconsidered by the planning commission on October 24. There are no questions or comments. That will take care of item three. I will go to item four, and we're going to do item four and five together, they're public hearings, to consider the 2007 addition to the fire code and to the building code. These are annual events that take place, primarily minor substantive language changes. Unless there are questions and comments from members of the council, I will open both public hearings on items four and five, dealing with ordinance number 2215, which is the fire code portion, and 2210, which is the building code portion. Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on either agenda item four and/or agenda item five, dealing with the fire code and the building code. Hearing no public comment, I will close both public hearings. Ask the city clerk to first read the title of proposed ordinance 2215.
An ordinance of the City of Victorville adopting by reference the 2007 addition of the California Fire Code with amendments and additions to portions thereof.
Is there a reading?
Second. Second. I'm sorry, I need a motion and a second selected.
I punched the buttons.
I'm still on the voting screen. Still on the voting screen. The last, from the last vote. There's two votes on that one item. I think we need to combine the votes, don't we?
We're struggling learning this new technology, so please bear with us.
Yes, if you can do the waiving of further reading and introduction in one motion, then that would--
Okay, that was my motion.
Okay.
For the record.
Councilmembers didn't play enough video games growing up.
There were no video games when you were my age growing up.
Yeah, Pac-Man.
So have we waived further reading of ordinance 2215?
Yes.
And it's been introduced, and we have--
We're on item five now.
Ordinance 2210.
An ordinance of the City of Victorville adopting by reference the 2007 addition of the California Building Code with amendments and additions to portions thereof.
Moved away further reading and introduction of ordinance 2210.
I need a second.
Second.
Got to push your button.
I did.
There it is. Now we can vote. All right, ordinance--
Councilmember Almond, I need a vote from you.
There we go.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2210 is introduced. Item six is proposed ordinance 2214, which if approved, will make certain amendments to the municipal code dealing with the dollar amount or the threshold amount for city manager approval of professional services contracts. We've been provided with the backup material on this. Questions or comments from members of the council? Of course, you could always adjust it downward, you know, we could take away some of his spending authority.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
That's your motion?
No.
Is there a motion to make the adjustments?
So moved.
Second.
Buttons.
I need to read the title of the ordinance.
Please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville amending sections 2.28.060 and 2.28.280 of Chapter 2.28 of the Victorville Municipal Code to adjust the dollar amount threshold for city manager approval of professional service contracts.
Wait for the reading and introduction of ordinance Number 2214. Second.
Vote.
Councilmember Rothschild, thank you.
Hey, you don't have to mention names. Doesn't show up there.
Fine.
Agenda Item Seven is a public hearing dealing with proposed ordinance Number 2216, which sets forth a variety of non-substantive language changes in our municipal code, all based upon state statute and/or correction of typographical errors. There must be 50 or 60 such changes set forth in Item Seven. Questions or comments from members of the Council?
For approval?
No, we have to...
Oh, I'm sorry. You have a hearing.
Have the title of ordinance 2216 read.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville amending non-substantive language such as references to state law statutes and typographical errors to various sections of the municipal code as set forth in the title of ordinance Number 2216.
Move the way for the reading and introduction of ordinance Number 2216.
Second.
Vote. Agenda Item Eight is a public hearing dealing with proposed resolution Number 07300, which, if adopted, would make and determine confirming assessments for the unpaid rubbish collection, sewer use fees, storm drain fees, hazardous waste fees, and Assembly Bill 939 recycling fees. Questions or comments from members of the Council? Not a motion on proposed resolution 07300. I better open the public hearing. First, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on proposed resolution 07300? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, Council.
Madam?
Second.
Item Nine...
Councilmember Almond, I need a vote from you.
Item Nine and Item Ten are public hearings that we will take together. Item Nine deals with proposed resolution 07306 and 07307, which deals with the formation of a landscape maintenance district and approval, which is necessary for tracks 16890 and 26891. Item Ten is the proposed resolutions 07305 and 07308, which deal with the street lighting assessment district. And again, these are tied to the approval of tract 16890. I will open the public hearings on Items Nine and Ten and all four of the proposed resolutions dealing with, first, the landscape maintenance assessment district, and, secondly, the street lighting assessment district for tract 16890. Invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on any of the four resolutions set forth in Items Nine and Ten. Hearing no public comment, I will close the public hearing and ask for one motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
There we go. Vote. Item 11 is the Consent Calendar. All of these items have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. They will be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for an item to be removed from the consent calendar.
For approval?
Second.
Item 12 is a presentation of the Fire Medic Proposal of Funding Issues. Unfortunately, our council member, Rudy Cabralas, our former fire chief and a member of our ad hoc committee along with Councilman Hunter, could not be with us tonight. I don't think we're going to do much with this item, except I will defer to Mr. Hunter for comments and suggestions.
Not many comments. Just if the Council would make sure on the proposal that Chief Becker put in our box, if we'd make sure we read that before the next meeting, go over the suggestions that have been placed in there, and if we have any, if individually we have any ideas of where funding can come from, be ready to discuss it at the next meeting.
Any other questions or comments? With that, then, Item 12, dealing with the Fire Medic Proposal Funding Issues, will be continued to the first regularly scheduled meeting in November, which I believe is November 6th.
Correct.
7:00 p.m. these chambers. Item 13 is a request to award a contract to Mattage Corporation for street improvements on Seneca Road from Hisperia Road to Seventh and overlay projects in the Foxborough industrial area. Amount of the award, $1,102,121.
For approval?
Second.
I need a second.
Second.
Item 14 is a request to award a contract to Joe's Sunrise Construction for ADA upgrades at SCLA Conference Center. Low bid price, $48,800, and to appropriate from the EDA grant 074905386 in the amount of $52,704 and another $5,856 from bond proceeds. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Item 15 is proposed resolution 07220, which, if adopted, would result in the City adopting the Measure I Four Year Capital Improvement Program and the Twenty-Year Transportation Plan, and it would rescind former resolution Number 06157. Questions or comments from members of the Council?
Councilman Rothschild, thank you.
Item 16 is a request to approve the contribution of $500,000 to the HDC JPA for initial cost within the limits of existing US 395 to the San Bernardino County Line, and appropriate that money from the $800,000 in federal demonstration funds which were assigned to the City of Victorville. Questions or comments from members of the Council?
Approval?
Member Rothschild, I need a vote. I'm sorry.
Item 17, reports from council members.
Just briefly, yesterday, we had our first steering committee meeting of the U-Turn program, which is the program we're initiating to prevent young children from getting into gangs. Well-attended, we had about 19 individuals attend, including members from the District Attorney's Office, the Probation Department, Sharon Runner's Office, Mr. Brad Nitzfeld's office, and sundry others. Well-attended, the process has started to start selecting the children for this program. Everyone is very excited about the possibility, even though it's going to be a long-term, years-and-years program and possibly into other areas. But it was a good meeting, and I look forward to a lot coming out from it.
Rothschild?
I had the privilege of going on a roof tour today to basically of our city hall and to look at the innovations that we've got up there. We've got a very green building here and a very green city, you might add, but up there on the rooftop, we have the solar panels up there, the state-of-the-art ones that are even better than the air quality districts, which were the state-of-the-art when we put those up there a few years ago. These, basically, you can walk on them, wash them down, anything you want, and on a good day, they can carry about a third of the load for the building. We've also got the Ice Bear on top up there, our air conditioning, which is a totally green environment where they, we actually use our electricity in the best time, in the middle of the night, instead of in the middle of the day when the greatest demand is there. Thirdly, the lighting system, the natural light system of the building on the roof, again, you can see these things a lot better than just walking down the hall and looking and taking notice, but very thoughtful way of having the natural lights come in and we use up electricity again. And fourthly, Mr. Hunter's landscaping and watering systems that we've got in here for conservation of the water uses around this building and other buildings as we grow. It's an incredible building, and it's an incredible opportunity to show all that we can do at the moment, and as technology moves along, we'll add more and more when we get those opportunities there. Of course, our transportation system is part of our green system, too. So it's interesting that here you've got five Republicans running a very conservative city, and we're a very green city as well, so I'm very proud of that.
The last item is Agenda Item 18, which is the closed session. The items that will be discussed in closed session are enumerated on the agenda. In addition, we have the one that was added to the Redevelopment Agency, which will also be discussed in closed session. Are there any other items to add?
No, but for the record, I would like to point out that all of the affected properties are specifically listed on the agenda, along with the property owners and parcel numbers.
Going to go into closed session with appropriate staff. I would indicate that it is not anticipated that there will be any reportable action at the conclusion of the closed session. However, that cannot be guaranteed. You're welcome to stay and see. If you all want to go home and watch the Boston-Cleveland game, we would understand that. We will not be offended if we come out and this room is vacant. And so at this time, I will invite the Council and appropriate staff into closed session for the items that have been enumerated on the agenda. Thank you all for coming and being a part of tonight's council meeting.
Excuse me, Mayor Caldwell, this meeting should also be adjourned to Monday, October 29th at 6:00 p.m. for the Council's goal-setting workshop.
So noted. We'll now go into closed session.